All right, we're on air. Welcome, everybody, to the July meeting of the MSAD-15 School Board. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and that's a quorum, so I will declare that quorum and call the meeting to order. To give a start, let's join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, upcoming meetings, our next meeting is we're gonna have a workshop and organizational meeting on August ninth. I know we talked about that potentially being at an offsite location, but Craig and I and the lawyer talked, and if we do it here, it's a little bit more professional, and we also can record that presentation for later. So we decided to just keep it simple and have that be here at the pedal complex. If anybody is interested in how school board law works in the state of Maine, the first hour of that organizational workshop is going to be a presentation from Peter Filmly, the man who actually wrote this book, so he probably knows a little something about what he's talking about. And that is open to the public, and anybody is welcome. We probably won't let the public just fire questions away, but it'll be a workshop environment, a little bit less formal, and give everybody an opportunity to, you know, make sure they understand how school board law works in Maine and how we sort of interpret that through our bylaws. We try to do this on a regular basis anyway, but with a few new members who haven't been on the board before, we thought it was good to just get that hour-long download and make sure we start the year all on the same page. But if the public wants to come, I do think it's really informative, so feel free to join. Okay. Sorry about a couple of late additions to the agenda. One of the reasons that we're here today is to make sure that we get everybody hired, that we need to get hired, so they can hop onboard the train that is MSAD-15 right away. And so we've just added some names, there's no big changes to the agenda that came through earlier today. But are there any other additions or adjustments? All right, seeing none. Next up, any comments from the audience? You look like you got a nice shirt on, you don't wanna get up there?
I'm also.
No, all right, yeah. Thought maybe dressed up for it, we'll see. Seeing none, I'm gonna keep moving. Can I have a motion on the minutes from the June 14 business meeting, please?
I move, we accept as printed the minutes of the June 14 regular business meeting.
Second.
All right, any questions or concerns on that?
Sam.
Yeah.
I'd like to, reading the minutes, my name was not included in the list of people interested on the bond committee.
Oh, okay, yep.
So whether it's in the minutes or not, I'd like it to be noted.
Mm-hmm. Maggie, you got that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna talk about that bond committee later, so. Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor? All right. Okay. Let's go to the recognition, we got a couple of cool items.
Yep. Congratulations to the graduates of the great Gloucester Adult Education Program who received their diplomas at a ceremony on June 15, 2023. It was the most interesting adult graduation I've been to. We had a married couple receive their diploma, and their child is in kindergarten. And so it's a family affair.
That's awesome.
Very nice. And congratulations to Alexis Hutchings, Michael Maines, and Catherine Morrison, who were awarded international baccalaureate high school diplomas by the World IB Program last week. I did a little write-up in my memo to the school board, it is quite an achievement. So that is a big accomplishment for those three students. And congratulations to the MSAD-15 Special Education Department, who received accommodation for the Maine Department of Education Office of Special Services and Inclusive Education for their high level of performance in implementing the requirements of the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. So their students are scoring well on the state mandated and federal mandated standardized accessables.
Terrific. Congratulations, I have said this before, and I always say it, congrats to the people in the Adult Education Program, many of them got their HESET diplomas. And I myself have a GED, I have a high school dropout, and got my equivalent of the HESET was a GED, which allowed me to go to college and do whatever it is that I do now. So just want to say that I appreciate the hard work that they put in to get that HESET, and you can live an awesome life and live in gray mail. So let's get into the new business. Let's hire some people. Can I hear a motion on Amanda Diffin?
I move to consider Amanda Diffin, speech and language pathologist, to a first probationary contract at the Memorial School.
Second.
All right, for discussion, do we have an introduction?
Yes, Ms. Diffin and Ms. Hennessy can't be here, so we can take action, and they will be at the first business meeting in September, and you'll get to meet Ms. Diffin. Ms. Hennessy will formally introduce you, but Amanda Diffin, speech pathologist for Memorial School, she holds a Bachelor of Science in Special Education for the University of Farmington, and a Master of Science degree from Nova Southeastern University of Florida. She has seven years' experience as a speech and language pathologist at the Margaret Murphy Center for Children in Auburn. She was also a program director and teacher at Child Development Services in Norway, Maine for three years. And Ms. Diffin is an American Speech and Hearing Association member with the State of Maine Speech and Language Pathologist licensure. I conducted her second interview, and I think she's gonna be a first-rate professional for our school district. And what's more, she is a former student, apparently, a while ago, of Mr. Riley Benoit.
Wow.
That's a short time ago.
She must be very young.
Thank you.
That's terrific. Any questions or concerns on that? All right, all in favor? Great. Okay, let's get to John Holt.
I think motion first, right?
Yep.
I move, we consider John Holt, math teacher, to a first probationary contract at the high school.
Second.
All right.
So it's my pleasure to introduce John Holt to you all. John holds a Bachelor of Science in Secondary Mathematics from the University of Maine, Orno. He completed his student teaching experience at Portland High School, where he taught courses from college prep geometry, all the way up through advanced placement calculus courses. He also completed a hundred-hour internship working at Orno Middle School, where he worked with students to support them in Algebra I and Algebra II classes. So in addition to this, he's also taught classes in STEM, which is science, engineering, technology, and mathematics. So he has some experience in those courses, and in his free time, he enjoys sailing, and he's been a sailing instructor since 2015.
Been out a while.
So he continues doing that throughout the summer as well. So we are very excited to have him join MSAD-15 and also our high school staff.
Great.
Very much looking forward to it, you all have been very kind to me, so I appreciate it.
Any thoughts or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Great. Congrats, John.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, it's great to see your face.
Appreciate having you.
We are not gonna start a sailing team.
Aw, come on.
I don't know, it'd be cool on Crystal Lake, all right. Okay, Stephanie Abrams.
All right, I move that we appoint Stephanie Abrams, eighth-grade science teacher, to a first probationary contract at the middle school.
Second.
All right, take it away, Rick.
Yes, so I get to introduce Stephanie Abrams. We're really excited to have her join the middle school team, was just far and away the most outstanding candidate that we interviewed through this process. She has her bachelor's in secondary ed from St. Joseph's, she just recently received that, interned at Wyndham High School, and then worked in their Apex, which is their alternative ed program, teaching science, so she has a lot of experience and a lot of skill in dragging along reluctant science students and creating activities and learning experiences that they really buy into. Yeah, we're just really excited her, the references for her could not say enough about her professionalism, that she is just a complete professional, conducts herself always as a professional, and just has great relationships with the kids.
Great. Any thoughts or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Excellent. Thank you so much, welcome to the district, Stephanie.
Thank you. Excited, thank you.
Appreciate you, we always appreciate you coming here, I know it seems a little bit silly, but it's great to see our teachers in the flesh. All right, Melissa Denick.
All right, I move that we appoint Melissa Denick, gateway teacher, to a first probationary contract at the middle school.
Second.
All right, introducing Melissa Denick. Melissa, among her other degrees, most recently has a CAS in Applied Behavior Analysis from USM, has a ton of experience working in both middle school and high school in alternative ed and special education. She told us in the interview, and again, her references came through really clear, that she builds relationships with kids. And that's the most important thing, especially in a program like this, that our kids have positive relationships with their teachers, with the other staff that they work with, and Melissa's going to really bring that to us. Most recently was in a high school setting, but really wanted to come back to middle school, where she felt like she could intervene a little earlier and make some real positive differences earlier for some of our students, so excited to have her on board, too.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Great. Any thoughts or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor? All right, congratulations, welcome to the district, Melissa. Okay, there's nobody else to hire, right? All right, let's move into, we don't have any old business, we haven't, none of the committees have met since the last time that we met, but I did just wanna say a quick note about committees, I'm gonna have those hopefully finalized by the August meeting, so that we can kind of think about what our agendas are gonna be for each of those committees going forward. I have gotten a couple of notes from people who have preferences for committees. For people who have already been on the board, I've either probably talked to you, or will just run you back with the committees that you are on. If you want a change, or you're interested in doing something different, send me an email between now and August 1st, and I'll take that into consideration. For people who haven't been on the board before, what we try to do, since there's eleven of us, is have each of us have two committee posts, and that gives us enough to have a quorum and be able to miss a person every once in a while on those committees. So that also shares the work, everybody does two, and because I'm the chair, I try not to sit officially on too many committees myself, but I do tend to go to all of them, so in a pinch, I can act as ex officio and fill out a quorum if we're short on people. Any questions on committee stuff? All right, cool. School Board Chair Report, it's gonna lead right into the Superintendent's Report, but people might be wondering what happened to the bond committee that we talked about. We did have the resignation of our athletic director, and now we're about to talk about hiring a new one. Felt like it was a little silly to start meeting with that committee without the athletic director that we're gonna have in place, so short delay on that, but hopefully we can hit the ground running on that. Otherwise, I don't think I have anything else to report, other than I've seen a bunch of kids out on the summer fields, and one of the great things I think that we do in this district is have a ton of summer programming, and in some ways, you'd never know that we weren't in session, there's kids just all over the place, and I think it's great that we're making sure the students get a year-round experience from us. Yep, Fran?
Do you, I have an update from your meeting, Joint Chiefs of.
Oh, yeah, we had, so we had a, the Joint Chiefs, the.
What was it called?
We have the Joint Leaders.
Okay, it used to be Joint Chiefs.
Right, yep. I don't ever wanna be a chief, but, so for people that don't know, we do have, we have a quarterly meeting with the superintendent and I, and the town managers of each town, Granite Gloucester, and the chairs of the boards of Granite Gloucester. And we actually had a very short meeting, because it was just me and Paul Larrabee, the chair, and Krista, the chair, was remote, and we didn't have the Gloucester Town Manager Bill, we did have Nate, but Craig wasn't able to get there, so we actually just did a little bit of a catch-up on the budget season, I got a catch-up on what was gonna happen with the town of Gray, because they have to get their budget passed again. I just didn't know how that worked, in terms of cash flow and that sort of thing, but they said, you know, there wasn't any worry about employees having to be furloughed or anything, and so it shouldn't have any effect on us, in terms of our communications with them. And then we talked about potentially sharing the cost of a line painter, which is a device that you can use to line athletic fields. They're a little bit expensive, but if we shared it amongst the three political entities, it might not be that bad. So it's something that we're investigating, can save a lot of people hours out there on the fields potentially, so. That's a good question, thanks, Fran, I'm sorry that I didn't think to do that. That's all I got, Superintendent's Report?
Yes, I'd like to introduce to you our new athletic director, Nathan Priest, and he is currently the athletic director.
Nathan, go up to the little Mikey thing.
He is currently the athletic director at Morris High School in Bath. He's been there for five years. I'd like to read a quote from, I checked references pretty thoroughly, and I'd like to have a quote from his current superintendent, Mr. Emanuel. He says, "Nathan is professional, responsive, innovative, and thoughtful. He has made changes to the athletic department that have made lasting improvements in the programming for students, coaches, and faculty at Morris High School. Nathan is organized and forward-thinking in his planning and execution of the daily tasks in the role, as well as long-term planning and programmatic changes." And I spoke to his building principal as well, and equally, he gets high professional marks. He has a master's degree in athletic administration, and he has also been a leader of the wellness programming for, is it York or Cumberland County YMCA?
Northern York County YMCA.
Northern York, YMCA, Cumberland County. And Morris High School built a new high school over the last two-year period, comprehensive buildings and grounds rebuild, and he was a key person in consultations and working with the athletic portion of that piece. So I think as we look at our athletic facilities, he brings a lot to the table. And he knows our kids, he is a resident of Gray, and he was a, is it track and field or cross-country coach for our school department?
Both.
For both. So, welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, I appreciate the support, certainly do. Really excited to be back here, as Dr. King had said, you know, I coached here once upon a time, a lot of those families have moved on, so I'm really excited to reconnect with some people who are still here, and get to know, you know, people who are here currently. So thank you very much for your support.
Great, thanks for being here. People who are on the search committee, anything you wanna say, Personnel Chair, Jason, or Gary, I know you guys are on the search committee, it looked like a really great slate of candidates.
Yeah, we had some very strong candidates, and I, you know, I'm not gonna go into too much detail beyond what Craig has said, but, you know, very impressed with what we saw, and say that Nathan was, you know, rose to the top of that list.
Thank you.
That was a good candidate, I wouldn't say the others were not good choices, but he was the obvious choice, I think, in the group. I wouldn't be happy with any in many ways, but it was the best, it worked out really well.
I was, I was really encouraged, Nathan, psyched to have you onboard, but I just wanna say that I was psyched by the quality of the candidate base, 'cause it meant that people wanted to come here, and they saw the opportunity that we presented, so I felt good about that, and especially to be able to get somebody onboard so quickly. I also just wanna say publicly that Susan did a great job for us, Susan Robbins was an excellent athletic director for us, and she got a great opportunity for her and took it, and, you know, definitely wanna say thank you for all the work that she did, which added new programs, and, you know, I think that's a lot of work. How are you at esports? That's, that's our new thing.
Sure, I actually started esports, or helped start esports at Morris High School, so personally, I'm not very good at esports, but I think, I think that's something we can certainly look at starting here, yeah.
Yeah, we are, we're working on it, we're just about to get it going, so it's excellent to have you onboard. Any other questions or thoughts?
Just, I was gonna mention, you were here at 11 and 14, I think you said, and you coached here?
Yes.
Okay, that was my son's high school trip, and he was on track at that time, so he would've, he would've had you during that period.
We would've crossed paths.
Absolutely, so there are many of us still here.
That's great.
And you lived here, so that's amazing, that you're so close to home.
It is, that's one of the, you know, there's a lot of considerations, but that was certainly one of them, you know, I was telling some people earlier, fifty minutes to Bath every day, one way, that's now gonna be a five-minute commute on Egypt Road, so very much looking forward to that.
Awesome.
Anytime we need a key or turn the outside lights on.
Give me a call, I guess.
Awesome, well, thank you for being here, Nathan, welcome to the district.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's continue with the new hires.
Yes, Candace Strout, Lead Secretary at the middle school, Juan Bustamante, groundskeeper in facilities, Kelly Busk, Ed Tech Two at the middle school, Ian McCarthy, varsity boys' basketball coach at the high school. Resignations, Leanne Invinz, social worker at the middle school, Susan Robbins, Athletic Director, Amanda Gardner, Lead Secretary at the middle school, Megan Doyle, Technology Director, effective September 15. And transfers, Raymond Topar has transferred from day custodian at the high school to head custodian at the high school.
So Craig, do you wanna just take a minute, obviously not getting into, you know, personal details, but obviously our Technology Director is a significant position in the district, just the brief outline of the plan to replace Megan, who has done a great job for us.
Yeah, Megan is been a really great technology director, and, and I think has helped facilitate a great leap forward for us. Her children attend Oxford Hills High School, and Oxford Hills has been in search of Technology Director for quite a while. And she was reluctant, she really likes it here, but, you know, every time there's a ballgame, or a parents' night, or an open house for her children, you know, it's, it's a ninety-minute round trip, so it's just become.
Too hard to set up.
Yeah, an obvious choice for her, so, but she will be here for the next eight weeks, and we wish her the best of luck when she does move to Oxford Hills.
Well, we appreciate that transition time from Megan, because it's a super important job, we wanna make sure that handover happens in well-coordinated fashion, so congratulations to Megan on her opportunity, and good job available, everybody who's watching. Technology Director for a school district is a lot better than in the corporate world, I bet. So come on over. All right, let's move on to the school board meeting schedule.
So Maggie has prepared a draft, and Shanda, and Diane, and I have gone over it, and Sam proofread it, so we found a few errors that have already been corrected, and the idea behind sending you the draft is, number one, to look for errors, number two, for new board members, well, new and existing board members, thinking about which committee you might like to serve on, you see when, every single meeting between now and budget referendum is listed, and we keep the same week for every committee, so the business meeting is always the first Wednesday, and the finance committee is always the second Wednesday, so it helps you plan out your life when you see it. So if you do see any errors, feel free, and the next time we meet, August 9, I'll just distribute both electronically and hard copy the final draft. There are two asterisks on October 11 and October 18, those two committee meetings are out of sync. And the reason I put them out of sync is, I'm ninety percent sure I have to be out of town October 11. So, and early in the year is when we're still doing a lot of personnel committee kind of work. If it were late in the year, I wouldn't change it, but early in the year, Personnel Committee still has a lot of stuff to do from the summer, so that's the reason for that asterisk. Aside from that, the committees are on schedule.
Obviously, the first meeting on the calendar is always nine, not August 2, and it's not four to eight, it's 5:30, but conflated two things.
Is it no longer the tour also?
No, we're gonna do the tour in the fall.
Right, so that's not happening?
Right, we're just gonna do the presentation and the organization. Yep, hi, Jack.
Just kinda looking through, notice there's another asterisk, December 13, again, it looks like out of sequence, policy is meeting that day with, with finance, but it looks like December, there's no Personnel Committee?
Yeah, thank you for catching that. That was one of the reasons we did it on order, can't afford to miss two Personnel Committee meetings. What happens, and this has been going on for eleven years since I've been superintendent, is that last week before Christmas, it becomes very difficult for board members to attend meetings, so we would always have, we would schedule meetings like December 20, December 21, December 22, with all good intentions of running the meetings, and then.
Doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen, so we just sort of.
But do we want that December 13 to be a Personnel meeting, I think? Because we have that policy November 29, and then we wouldn't have a Personnel meeting until January 10. Do you think we want a Personnel meeting in December?
So we could do a Personnel meeting in December at 4:30, and we shy away from doing meetings that early, because people have jobs and so on and so forth, but if people could plan four months in advance, we could do a Personnel at 4:30 and not.
Or we can maybe hold that as a Personnel slash policy and use it for the one that needs it? Or you think we're definitely gonna need this policy?
Yeah, we could use Personnel, there's a lot going on, we have a new contract coming out.
Do you think we need the policy?
Right, that's what I'm saying, is maybe we could just swap it in for that policy.
The 28 policies we have lined up for review.
I'll just say, I think that I might be more flexible, I don't know what your day will be by then, or if we're on the same committees, but if you wanna put policy at 4:30, that might be easier for me to make than.
My recommendation would be to wait until the committees have been formed.
Yeah.
To decide on availability.
Good, all right. Good. Good eye, though, good spotting.
Good idea, Jason, he's so sensible.
Any other thoughts on the calendar? Did we see anything?
I could never make a 4:30 meeting.
You need it to be after 5:30, or 5:30 or later?
In fact, I just put in for six o'clock, so, to work up until six, so I could come to these meetings, so I didn't realize this is a 5:30 meeting, so it's in my contract now, so I'll be late.
All right, well, so you're gonna be, I think I wanted you on finance anyway, and so that's a 6:30 meeting.
That was good.
So that's a good one, all right, so I'll take that into consideration, and maybe we can find a way to work around that.
Okay, the facilities tour, I had a conversation with Jeff Robbins and Tom Bullen, and they can host, they'll be prepared to host a facilities tour for the entire school board, and anyone in the public that would like to go, to visit all the facilities, all the schools. It'll give you a chance to see firsthand what maintenance and upkeep work was done over the summer, and then look at the plan for maintenance and upkeep on showing you firsthand things that need to be worked on. And so the trick question is always, do we do. And so the trick question uh is always, do we do it during a workday when the kids are there and we see the kids? Which is very nice, but it's disruptive to the kids. Or do we wait, we do it on a Saturday, which means you have to commit a Saturday and it takes a good, to do all five buildings and visit the bus garage really takes six hours. And so it's a it's a full Saturday to do that. So they're ready to host us, it's just a question of us letting them know the date we've decided.
Uh, so I'll open up discussion on that. Um, I like the Saturday morning, um, just because um it is a public meeting and that allows the public to come if they want to. Generally, we have a bus driver and we all get on a school bus and go around uh building to building. Uh, much easier to do on a Saturday than it is trying to do it, you know, on a Wednesday night or something like that. Um, I do understand Saturdays are precious, but you know, I think if we start early, do like an eight AM start or something, we can try to wrap it up by one o'clock, you know, if we just keep our hustle on. Um, I was thinking something like September sixteenth or September thirtieth. Um, so it is kinda early, uh, and I know that this is asking a lot, it's, you know, it is definitely outside of our normal meeting schedule, but I don't think anybody's ever gone on the facilities tour and read it. It's just a a great way to really get hands-on with the stuff that we're in charge of.
What about early October?
Early, I mean, uh, October seventh, I think, could be doable. Go ahead, Jason.
So I personally agree with the Saturday on a on a personal level. I think no matter what, it's gonna be difficult for some community members to get there, whether it's during the week or Saturdays, there's so many activities that happen on Saturdays. But if we're gonna do it on a Saturday, I would recommend we do it as early as possible before s- athletic games and competitions and things like that start. I think we have a better chance of getting other people to attend.
Alright, other thoughts?
I like early September on a Saturday, that.
The ninth? Is that, that's early September. That'd be the Saturday after school starts. And you know, if if people can only do a portion of it, you know, if you can see two schools, you know, there's, it's uh, we're all volunteers. Of sorts. What's that?
I can do whatever.
Alright, uh, objections to the ninth?
I have a question. So the one for August second, that facilities, that's not gonna.
So that, yeah, that was a misprint. That would, that should be the August ninth organizational meeting. At one point, we were talking with that organizational meeting about combining it with a facilities tour.
Okay.
And we just decided that was too much. It would just be too fatiguing.
Alright.
Um, so on August ninth, we're just doing the organizational and and educational piece here and then we're breaking out the facilities tour.
And you said that four o'clock?
It'll be at five thirty will be that August ninth one.
Oh, okay, so five thirty? For me, September ninth, I can't commit to.
I can't either.
Personally, but uh I could do the weekend after, I could do the weekend before.
Would would the, would early in the school year be hard with things kicking off and starting? That's why I thought going later would be better, but I mean.
I think probably.
The second is gonna be Labor Day weekend.
We can, we're not doing the second.
And the second is um indigenous people.
Weekend, yeah.
That's tied to that holiday, so that that's why I was just worried about going too too early.
I think the twenty-third of September will be homecoming. We probably wanna avoid that.
And then the thirtieth is coming up there.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth is the best one.
Straw poll on the sixteenth?
I'll go for it.
Okay, let's do the sixteenth. Is that alright with you, Greg?
Yep.
And the time again, please?
That'll be eight AM and we'll meet at the bus garage. Uh, the bus garage is the, you know, bus depot that's right behind the high school. So we'll meet there, we'll all get on, we'll probably do the high school first, actually. Or we'll let the facilities team decide the order, uh, however it's best.
So um I have some uh information for you that's hot off the press. Um, it is our uh the status of all our personnel positions as of three o'clock this afternoon. Uh, I've also included, so at Memorial School, I I, the way I've set it up, I'm not gonna read it to you, but I'll I'll tell you how I set it up. I've listed every school and then the district-wide positions and broke it up into three categories. Few or no qualified applicants, interviews are scheduled and taking place, and job is filled or likely to be filled. So there were like two people I wanted to bring tonight, but there were two or three i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed, so I didn't bring them. So they're kinda ninety-five percent ready to bring to you. I've also included on the back the four directors that have had some status changes for you to look at. And then at the bottom of the second page, I, as I said earlier, I spoke to Tom Bullen and Jeff Robbins and these are some of the major projects that ha- they have completed or are very nearly completed in their summer facilities work. And I'll just let you look at this and then you can ask me any questions you have.
Have the uh no dog signs been put up?
I'll follow them.
Nice.
Oh, yes, they are very prominent.
Good job.
I would say that that solution has worked amazingly well, so.
Amazingly well signed.
That was worth every penny that we spent on those signs. Uh, questions or thoughts? Jason?
I have one question. I realize you may not be able to answer this at this point in time. There was something that had come up a couple of times last year, um, I don't see on this list of items. Uh, and that is at Memorial School, that door in the library, the the leaking.
It's still on the, so thi- this is, there are probably forty-eight other things they're working on. These are just the ones that rose to the top of me being able to tell you tonight. They're either done or will be done shortly. So all those other things might be just started or halfway done and so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, definitely wanna give a shout-out to the field maintenance team. Uh, I can't remember a summer when the fields have looked as good as they do now. Uh, we've been playing uh baseball on the middle school baseball field. I think it's maybe the best baseball field, uh, you know, that we play on regularly, so kudos to that team uh for really stepping up their game. It's been really great.
Spend money on a water cannon, it get rain.
It's amazing.
That's exactly right.
Go ahead, Cole.
Uh, one of the things that uh we talked about a while ago in the uh facilities committee and for some reason, I just don't think it's been completely done yet, but our scoreboards, signs.
Hmm.
Uh, just kinda, and I know that that was kinda in a transition, uh, but I just kinda wanna get an update on that sooner rather than later. That's something that's been talked about, that we keep falling behind on and.
I would agree with that. Um, if Nathan is still listening or watches this later, one of my, one of my great passions that I've been unable to succeed in is to get all the scoreboards to have the right time. That's all I want. I just wanna look at the scoreboard and have it be the right time and it is very hard to do, apparently. So if anybody's out there listening, I'll, I don't know, make you brownies or something, if you can make that happen.
They're they're not that old.
I know.
It amazes me that they're.
There's so, it's.
So hard to maintain.
It's something, I don't know.
They've been replaced since I joined the board.
Yeah.
Um, for all of them, but I did wait, I think, twelve years to get the middle school gym scoreboard repaired and replaced, so. You're probably still a little time-wobbly.
There's this little pet project.
And the time, but to be to be honest, the time hasn't been right since day one.
Right, I know.
The one on the track never matches the one on the baseball field.
I don't know why they can't be the same time.
It it's, um, I I don't know what it is either and scoreboards have been the bane of my existence for I don't know how many years. So I know, I think it was my second year here, they pulled out the entire electric board because somehow over the winter, water got into where it's not supposed to be, so it fried the whole thing. And so that one should be correct, but there is another one behind um the um trap that i- is problematic, so um.
I'm I'm being a little bit silly, but I. It is.
I think it's like one of those things that the public looks and they're like, what the heck?
Well, it, first impressions are everything, right?
Yeah.
So we've got these away teams that come here and we can't even have a scoreboard that works properly. Second of all, we're gonna be going for a bond and we're gonna be asking the public, you know, possibly put up some money for facilities and if we can't even maintain things like scoreboards, it just doesn't work well.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, any questions or thoughts on um the positions that are open? If anybody's watching, we desperately need you at techs. Um, I know it is a difficult job, but uh it's a great and rewarding job and uh you get full benefits, um, which, you know, can be quite significant uh in terms of the compensation package. And uh I I don't think you have to answer very many emails, so you know, that has that going for it. Uh, also, um, the permanent substitute position at the Russell School, that is paid at the um, uh, the same as a first-year teacher. Uh, so that's a, you know, that's a good position, um, uh, with uh regular work, um, so.
Why would, why do we have that position, a permanent substitute position?
So what we found is, this started, it's a great question. Uh, it started during uh the pandemic when we just had staff out all the time uh and we just couldn't find any s- uh substitutes at all. We decided to use the um federal COVID money to hire uh permanent substitutes so that they would just be a kind of a roving person that can go to wherever there's a room empty. And when we did all the math, you know, it, we basically had at least one substitute every day anyway, so it wasn't uh any overwork. And then uh this is the last year right now that that permanent substitute position is funded and uh we've talked about getting a report at the end of that use and we'll decide whether that's something we wanna put into the local budget or if it's something that we wanna sunset out.
Uh, one final thing, uh, the uh comprehensive advertisement for a new athletic director, it'll be advertised on.
IT director.
IT director.
Yeah.
What did I say?
Athletic director.
Oh, oh, don't, we have an athletic director. Yeah, the uh director of technology uh tomorrow morning will be posted on uh servingschools.com. Indeed, um, indeed, and what's the other one? No, oh, is it Monster? Yeah.
Link in.
Uh, as well as the uh Portland Press Herald Thirty-Day Electronic Service. And so the um interviews are scheduled for August thirteen and fourteen. And on director positions, we usually have two school board members serve on the interview committee. Uh, so if you think that's something you'd like to do, uh, it is quite a bit of work. Um, I think last week, uh, both the screening committee and the interview committee probably put eight hours into it. So it's a, it's a fair amount of work, but it's um, it's an important position and you get to see, um, learn a lot. So let me know if you'd like to serve on that interview committee, uh, August thirteen, fourteen.
Alright, and then the last item.
Yes, it's Sunday question.
But wait, what?
Did you mean Sunday? Thirteenth is Sunday.
Is it? Then it would be.
Fourteen fifteen.
Fourteen fifteen. That time for you, that's.
Yeah, fourteen fifteen.
Okay.
Um, the last thing that's on our agenda is, yeah, oh, sorry, missed it.
Um, how many bus drivers are we short?
Short.
Technically, three.
Okay. Do we pay for that training?
We do.
In the advertisements, yes. We say we will help you get trained and uh if it's, if someone's walking in and they have nothing but a clean driving record, uh, to get their full driver's license is a long, long process. But if they've done some of the uh the preparation work, then we are able to help them finish it off.
It's good for the public to hear that.
Um, anything else on positions open? Sorry.
No, thank you.
Last thing uh on the agenda is um, especially for new members of the board, but for all members of the board, the Maine School Management Association's fiftieth annual Fall Conference uh is October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. It's a Thursday and a Friday at the Augusta Civic Center. Um, I know that people might have to take off work or they, you know, we understand, this is not in any way some sort of mandatory thing that I'm asking you to go to. Um, but what it is, is essentially a professional conference for people who serve on school boards. Uh, there's also a lot of superintendents there. Uh, it's kind of programming for both groups of people. And uh I go just about every year that I can. Sometimes I can't find the time off. Um, but it it's really valuable, not just for the education. Uh, there might be a panel on building a new building or working with a contractor or there's uh, you know, something on social media use by staff or, you know, whatever it happens to be. Uh, great presentations, uh, but it's also just a good place to do networking with other school board members and um, you know, Penny, uh, you might want to go to the, on the night before, usually that Wednesday night, there is a uh vice chairs and chairs, uh, uh, just goes through the responsibilities of whatever vice chair and a chair are. The people who are interested in being vice chair or chair, that's something to keep your eye on. Usually that's like Wednesday at four o'clock or something before it starts. Um, and again, that's, you know, how to build an agenda and how to manage a meeting and, you know, things that you might not have skills with in your normal life. Um, and everybody else in the room is either a vice chair or a chair or an aspiring vice chair or chair. So it's, you know, the sorts of people that are having the same questions and uh wondering the same things as you are. So I encourage people, if you can find the time, uh, to get up there. Uh, we can maybe carpool. I think I will almost definitely go. Uh, so let me know if you're interested and Maggie, uh, we do have budget to uh register people, so just letting Maggie know you wanna go and she'll get you registered.
Many board members only go for one day because they can't take two days off from work. So uh if you're one of those board members who think I can take one day but not two, um, the first day is probably the best one. Because it's solid sessions. The second day, second day's a little more fun, but it's more ceremonial. There's a big luncheon. Sometimes the governor speaks or they have a big guest speaker, they give some awards. But the 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 dense learning topics are are front-loaded on the first day.
Yeah, that's a good point. If you if you can only pick one, Thursday's definitely the better day. The the keynote speaker tends to be, you know, sort of, man. Alright, uh, any other uh items or questions on anything? Alright, well then let's get back to this beautiful summer day in gray. Uh, can I hear motion to adjourn? Do adjourn.
Second.
Alright, thanks, everybody.